Okay, we'll have a moment of silence and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I'd like to call the meeting of Monongate County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. Let's start with consent approval with our county administrator, Renata McCourt. Good morning, Renata.
Good morning. We have nine exonerations for $2,008.43, minutes for January 20th, 2020. General County Fund vouchers, 105, 73761. Cole Severance, 1,005.4577. magistrate court, $21.60. 911, 4,003.8173. Chestnut Ridge Park, 3,005.6713. Camp Muffley, 595.26. Mason Dixon Park, 2,002.7434. Assessor's valuation, 1,005.20. Payroll, 932,137.31. Law enforcement forfeiture, 14,400. Purchasing card vouchers, General County Fund, 5,175.94. Cole Severance, 1,001.2939. 911, 1,001.9748. Chestnut Ridge Park, 518.12. Mason Dixon Park, 515.88. Assessor's valuation, 95.45. For a voucher total of 1,074,813.01. Budget revisions, there are none. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website. Fiduciary orders for January 27th, 2021. We also have the fourth quarter 2020 file status reports for Ryan Umina and Beth LeBeau, fiduciary commissioners.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval. Seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I just pass. We don't have any separate fiduciary orders.
No, that's all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is introduction of new employees and personnel changes.
I just have one.
Patrick Penn from the assessor's office. Morning, Patrick.
Good morning, everyone. At this point, everybody should have a letter in front of them. We're asking approval to hire Ms. Tina Gibson-Gidley as data entry specialist. She'll be replacing Melanie Rowley. 35-hour-a-week employee benefits eligible after a 90-day introductory period. Any other questions? Anything? Everything's there in front of you?
Move for approval. Seconded.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay, do we have any other new employees?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. We will now open the meeting for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard must raise his hand, come forward, and provide his or her name and address for the record. And please note that time will be limited to three minutes unless circumstances warrant additional time. Doesn't look like we have anybody in public. Public session is now closed. Next item, Dr. Lee Smith, Executive Director, County Health Officer, Monongate County Health Department. Dr. Smith, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, sirs. Well, I want to give a little bit of a report. I'd like to start with the graph if I could. Perfect. And yeah, go to sheet number two. And scroll up just a wee little bit if you can. Perfect. So if I can direct everyone's attention to the screen, it's getting a little cumbersome so some of the individual points don't show up. There is a red line going from left to right that is the 25 mark, which is 25 cases per 100,000. And if you remember way back when, when the state adopted the Harvard University metrics, less than one was green, less than 10 was yellow, 15 marked the transition between gold and orange, and above, orange went to 25, and then 25 and above was sort of danger zone. The mitigation strategy has always been for above 25 is a potential stay-at-home order. And so we're very, Jimmy, cognizant that may be, you know, at some point in time, you know, triggered. And so we want to do what we can to stay below 25. And so if you will, the very far left is the first couple of days in March when we started keeping data. So this is inclusive up to yesterday. And every blue line on here is the number of, at a seven-day average. It's not the individual number. It smoothes it out a bit if you do the seven-day average, and that's why the first seven days is blank. So on day seven, we started, and we were below five, and we went through March and April and May, and then in June, we started up. In July, we saw our first great uptick. And it was a combination of the Fourth of July parties, people coming back from Myrtle Beach, school being out, et cetera. And we went into the red and went up to about less than 50 cases for 100,000, and stayed in that red area for about seven days. And then, as you can see, we dropped down pretty sharply. At that time, there were bar closure orders from the state government. And then the next time we saw a spike was in September. And this was with the opening of the university and the return of students from elsewhere. And once again, in September, we shot through the red zone, and this time, we stayed in it for two weeks. And I would like to point out that the downward slope coming back down from the top was pretty sharp here, and it's less sharp there, and it's even less sharp now. And so then, this final point over here represents where we went through the red back in November. And we had, this is sort of the Thanksgiving dip when people were not getting tested as much, and so the numbers dropped. And then we had Christmas, and then New Year's, and then January. And so we've been into this now since November. So that's, you know, now, now we're not measuring in weeks, we're measuring it in months. And sort of back of the envelope, if you will, if you look at this slope coming downward, sort of, my projection is that we will probably go below 25 somewhere around February 18. And hopefully, if everything continues as it is there. So I am excited to see the slope finally starting to move in the right direction. The other part that I don't have a full overlay to put on here, but I want to document probably at our next meeting, is to demonstrate how the vaccines have rolled out. Now, this is November, this is December, this is Christmas. And so in here, we started in December 15th, starting with vaccinations. And we were getting very small numbers, you know, here's 80, you know, we squeaked our way up to 100. And then we started getting into several hundreds. And so the total that Monongate County Health Department has been able to do thus far is about 4,000. It's a little bit to the north of 4,000, but while that, we might pat ourselves on the back, we need to get 4,000, not in a couple of weeks, we need to get 4,000 a day. And that is, you know, we've been punching above our weight for a long time, and we need some additional resources to get this part done. Now, the way that this works is that because the FDA has an emergency use authorization, that is not a drug that you can buy over the store, it's not even available to anyone outside of governmental agencies. So the FDA allows states to obtain vaccines, which right now is based on a population. And West Virginia, I believe, gets 26,000 and change a week. And then that has to be distributed out among all of the people that are giving vaccines. So in order to make that a little bit more organized, the state has mandated that there be a county committee formed that has to include emergency management, the federally-qualified healthcare centers, and the health department. And only that planning committee can then receive the vaccine from the state. So this is where we are right now, and we have been what we call steady state, which means that we're getting 620 doses a week for Monongate County. Now, some have, go to WVU, some also go to Mont Health Systems. And we invited representatives of those two organizations to be part of the planning committee. Therefore, we can ask for additional resources in terms of more vaccine from the state. And so the old Sears building at the mall has been leased by Western King University Hospitals and sort of donated to the pile, if you will. All of us are donating staff to run it. And hopefully, we can document to the government at the state level that we are capable of doing more than 620 doses a month, or weeks, excuse me. And so that's sort of where the plan is right now. Now, this regional concept was rolled out two weeks ago, and we have been doing that at the National Guard Armory. And we're in transition of moving all the vaccines into one pot, Mont Health, WVU, Monongate County Health Department's vaccine, and distributing them in one location. And the politicians of smaller counties made an eloquent argument that, hey, what about us? You can't just give this regionally. If I live out in the middle of nowhere, I don't want my people to have to dry four hours in the middle of January to get a vaccine. That's not fair. So the state is giving to all 55 counties a minimum of 200 doses a week. And that will continue for the next couple of weeks. And then it is my assumption, and I'm out on a limb here a little bit, that at some point in time, some of the smaller, more rural facilities probably will have fulfilled a great many of their people and may not need 200 a week. And so we are in a position to absorb those extra doses as they become available, and that's sort of where we are with that. So that's sort of an overview. I've got a couple more comments, if you will. And this, I want to have some preliminary comments about where we are and the question that I get the most, and I know Delegate Dettler does as well, is where am I on the list and how, when is it my turn to get the vaccine? So I think that understanding the history of this is a little bit important, and I don't want it to come across that I'm complaining, but I think it's important to understand that prior to COVID, West Virginia DHHR had a software system called SIS. That's West Virginia S-I-I-S, which is the state infection, excuse me, immunization program. Unfortunately, it's like an old DOS program. It's very old, it's very clunky, you can't get a lot done with it. But that's what we've used wherever. And so when children at the hot school age were getting their measles, mumps, it would get registered into that. And they also had the West Virginia Eds, which is another state-run program, which is a disease surveillance. And both of those quickly ran into trouble in trying to put these huge numbers into them. And so we started having to learn extra software. Now, we bought our own, with the help of the county commission, our own electronic medical record now, two years ago, it's called CureMD. It allows us to put people into our own medical record when they show up for a clinic, allows us to do billing, and therefore, we're one of the leaders in the state. Now, because the electronic disease surveillance program crashed, the state invested in a new one called Checks Out. And it has been a difficult thing to learn, and again, there's no, they keep the control in Charleston, you can't run reports, I can't see who's in there, it's kind of clunky. West Virginia University, because of the numbers of students that they were having, then invested in one called RedCap. And I looked just this morning, and there's 3,218 staff and students that are positive, sort of on West Virginia University's side of the fence, if you will. So at the end of the day, we had West Virginia Eds, West Virginia SIS, Checks Out, Ring Control, which is a way to timestamp communications, RedCap, and then came the Vaccine Administration System, or what we lovingly call VAMS, right? Where people are supposed to get registered. And now, we've got Everbridge. And so we had to learn Epic from WVU because we go in there and look at patients' records, we look at the Cerner system from Mont Health, and then we have our own. So that's 10 different software systems. And it leaves you on an unequal footing, and it's a little clunky. And so I ask people's patience that we're working hard to try and make, you know, this as smooth as possible. So right now, we are working to bring all of the lists together, and that's sort of the main question of the time. So Mon County Health Department started its list, WVU started its list, Mont Health started its list, special organizations started their list. You all had people on lists that you were submitting. And we thought that all this was going to go into Everbridge, and it was going to, we could finally say hallelujah, it's going to arrange it, because they're all time stamped and we can put everybody in. Unfortunately, there are still some growing pains with Everbridge, and it has now been rolled back two weeks before it goes live. It was supposed to go live first week in February, and now will be middle of the month before it goes live. Therefore, last evening, we were told by the state to keep your lists and work off of those during the scheduling problem, during this interim, I should say. And so while I can only apologize that this presents people problems, and it's inconsistent, and, you know, I'm a little tired of having an egg on my face here, I can only work in with what I'm given. And it's 10 software systems, and we're doing the best that we can. So what we did yesterday afternoon, we had a meeting of the regional planning committee. And there's also a bit that is a little difficult perhaps to understand, and that is with the Pfizer vaccine, when it gets reconstituted, depending upon the type of syringes that one uses, you may get five, that's what you're guaranteed, is five vaccines per vial. But occasionally, we get six, and rarely even seven. Now, the Moderna says 10, and pretty much you get 10 every time. But for Pfizer, your allotment is based on five doses, but in reality, you get six sometimes. And so we've got a kind of fudge, and we say it's five and a half per bottle. And so at the end of the day, if we say we've got 500 people that we're going to have today to get a vaccine, in reality, it might be 600 people because we have extra doses as we come through. So what we do in those situations, and it's been agreed upon, is that there will be a call-down list, that if you're on one of the lists, whether it's WVU Medicine, Mont Health, Monongate County Health Department, we merge those lists internally, and we will take the highest priority people. Now, part of the problem also, because we're dealing with people in their senior years, many people use call-blocking. They don't, you know, if you're home a lot, you don't want to, you know, have people constantly worried about your car warranty or whatever it is. And so they will block the calls. And what we have found is when we call back, we frequently get people who don't answer the phone. And so we've modified our messaging that, once you've signed up, you must anticipate that you're going to get another call back. And while it might be an inconvenience to take a couple of extra calls, we will be calling you to tell you where and when. And so that's been a little problematic. The other problem that we have, is human nature being what it is, is that people want to sign up. And they sign up on this list, and that list, and the next list, and there are people who game the system. I can't do anything about that. But occasionally, we will run into holes because the person's already been vaccinated, which leaves an open spot. So what we have agreed to do is we will stay in the zone. So if it's 65 and older, we will stay on the 65 and older list. The sooner that we get done with that, the sooner that we can get on to other areas. I have no control over where we are in the phased response. And if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, I showed you those slides, we had 1A, 1B, C, and D. And then the thinking was that it would be March until we started getting to the general population. Well, the leadership at the state has said we're going to go in a different direction. That's fine. And so we're doing the 80, 70, and above 65. And we will try and get that group sort of knocked out, as many people in that group that want it. And when the state decides that we will have vaccines for those other groups, I understand, and I hear it on a daily basis, and I'm concerned about the bus drivers and the school teachers and people that keep the continuity of government going. And we still find that there are people who didn't get included. For example, the people that are on the fire crew at the airport, they somehow missed the cut. And so we find these little pockets, and so we will try to work those in as doses become available. And I apologize that that's a little convoluted, but that's sort of where we are with things at this moment in time. Just one other update on vaccines. For those of you who have Merck stock, sorry, Merck Pharmaceutical has decided that they're pulling their product because they did not get sufficient amount of immunity, and so their vaccine is now off the market. Oxford University in England partnered with AstraZeneca, which is a German company, and theirs is a little bit delayed because they too don't have the amount of immunity that they were looking for. That leaves Johnson &amp; Johnson on this side of the pond, if you will, that is about three weeks out from going to their next level of Phase III study release. There's been a lot of concern because once you say something, it's irretractable, you guys know that better than I. And it was going to be 21 days or 28 days, and that was it, and we chiseled it in stone. And now, the advisory committee for the CDC has said that you can have the second dose either four days before, 21 days, or you can have it up to 42 days after. Now, that just came out, and that's visible on the CDC website. And so that's just a couple of days old, and really hasn't filtered out to the general population. But hopefully, this will relieve many people's concern that I had the alarm set for 21 days, and by golly, I got to be there. So 42 days after the 21-day deadline, or four days before, is now the range. And that kind of fits with our experience with other vaccinations, when there's a series of them, is that having a window is certainly fine to do. And so just once again, I want to thank the county commission for helping facilitate this coalition between the two giants that we live between, and getting everybody sort of in the harness and pulling in one direction. I think it is a great opportunity to serve the county and the region. I think that it relieves the health department of some of the heavy lifting that we've been involved with, and we can maybe begin to focus on some other things. Not the least of which is immunity in other communities, particularly communities of color and other minorities who have issues with trust and transportation and messaging, and we want to make sure that we're getting those people, no one left behind. So we are looking at working with senior centers, faith-based groups, and any other organizations, as well as home health and perhaps even food banks, to make sure that we have people understanding how they can get a vaccination and that we can get one to them. I think it would be foolish for the health department to jump in a van and run around the county with a bag full of syringes. I think that if we could use home health, who already has a relationship built with these people, is to do that and schedule that. Because it's not just the primary dose, but it's the booster dose. So you have to sort of think in sort of these longer-term type of situations. And I just want to give a shout out to the mountain lion and Dave Bruffey, who's been a great partner in this. And I feel for him because it seems like once a week, I'm asking him to create a new route and to pivot and go in a different direction, and they've been very willing to work with all of us. And so with that, I will entertain any questions you might have.
Tom?
I have a number, but since, Sean, you were the one who got it started, I'd rather you go with your questions first, and then I would feel more comfortable that way because I knew you were the one who got this going.
Then we could just fill in.
Yeah.
First of all, the Everbridge, you said that the state delayed the rollout?
Yes, sir.
Now, I know that the call center wasn't available yet, but the website was available when they said the first day, 62,000 people had entered it.
It's over 100,000.
So it's shut down? Or people can still enter?
That is a question I do not have the answer for this morning. It was my understanding that they were going to leave it open, but our ability to use it at the county level is not available until then. So unfortunately, what that's going to create is people are going to sign up for this one, and that one, and the next one. I can't help that, and I know people are anxious about getting the vaccine. That's a better problem than no one wanting to get the vaccine. So I think if people want to sign up with Everbridge, I think that if they can get it to work, that's fine. That seems to be the default, and the sooner they can get on that list, I think, the better. But I have not been told not to use it, I'm just being told that we cannot, at the county health department level, incorporate those lists into our lists at this time.
Okay. So we had a press conference on Monday, and of course, the state announced, I heard Friday, that they're announcing Everbridge, right at the time where we're working on the super-vaccination center, which had its own registration system.
Correct.
Which was going to upload into VAM, so it's kind of rendered that kind of moot right now. Should, given that Everbridge isn't going to be open for two weeks, should people continue to use that system?
Yes. And that has been agreed upon by West Virginia University and Mont Health. Dave Goldberg put out a thing, let's just go ahead and use the systems that we have. And I think that that's fine because that's-
Because they will eventually all get to Ever-
Yeah, and it all defaults back to us, and then we can try and get people in there as soon as possible. So, you know, whether it's wvumedicine.org or, you know, whatever. But I hope that people will not be calling into various places over the phone. It's easier if people do it online, but not everybody can.
Yeah.
So if we can just have the people who don't have internet or are not savvy, if they want to do that by phone, we'll be happy to walk them through the process. But if everybody goes through that, it's going to get clogged up.
Okay. Because the other thing too is, we were, when they announced Everbridge, and again, this is still, I just heard that yesterday, that, and I asked Albert, and it's still, obviously, probably hasn't even gotten to you yet, but we had, they had a certain amount of people designated for a call tree. And I asked him, I said, why don't you check with the state if you can just turn those people around and have them still be able to call and talk to people locally, but put the information in Everbridge? And that would still give them that local feel, that local contact. So, and again, I'm with you with the confusion. I really appreciate all your don, Dr. Smith, to keep this thing above water. It has been confusing. We are getting a lot of calls about, you know, we created lists, which we've given to the health department in regards to continuity of government. And it seems like some, and we're in a situation now where that was actually started, and we have some offices where the whole offices was vaccinated, and then other offices where it hasn't. So it's causing some, it's causing some friction amongst our county government. You saw with the, I mean, we all saw with the little snow, the little snowbursts we had the last couple of days. We can't get our roads treated. We can't get our roads treated, because Morgantown doesn't have the staff, the Department of Highways doesn't have the staff. So the critical infrastructure people are important, but everything I gather is, that's done, and we're basically just age-based only.
I don't know that I would say that it's done. It is, the focus is on age-based, and then at some point, when the spirits move Charleston, they will go back to continuity of government, and I'm still stuck somewhere in 1B.
I want Charleston to know that continuity of government's important.
Absolutely.
And I'm not arguing for myself. I'm going to get the shot whenever my age comes up. But there are employees that are fearful of coming to work, and, you know, that provide vital services to our citizens that need to be vaccinated, and that is all stopped.
Understood.
Can I get a clarification? That's the stumbling block. You said that there's a local group that is making those decisions of who gets the call out? I guess that's where my, you said there was a committee locally, county?
So the county planning committee.
Yeah.
Which is emergency management, the federally qualified healthcare center, the local Health Department, and now our two partners, Mon Health and WVU Hospitals. We agreed yesterday that when there is extra vaccine, which invariably happens-
Just on the extra vaccines?
That we will try to stay within, if it's a 65 and older clinic, we will use that list. Now, that doesn't help people who are continuity of government, because they're not on that list per se. And it really opens up a huge Pandora's box if we say, well, you're special, you come on down here, because people cannot seem to keep off of, well, look at me on Facebook, I'm so special. And then that just, it makes a difficult situation for you all as well as us. So we agreed that we would stay in our lane, if we were told at 65 and older, that's the lane that we will be in, and we will go down the list.
So that's my question.
And you've done the right thing.
Yeah.
I mean, if that's the way it should be followed, people just need to understand it. But the state created a false sense of security by creating these phased programs, which general public isn't till two.
Right.
So, and, you know, it's caused anxiety about, we're going to get this so that I don't have to worry about going to work, and now it doesn't seem that phasing even exists.
And that's why I want to get clarified with the press being here, and that you're asking. So what you're saying is, we had the phased program, and we had this, however, you're being dictated. And that's why I want to clear, so-
Yes, sir.
The public understands, it isn't you going out.
No.
Or I find people call me and say, well, we're making deals, and I'm like, I don't even know who to talk to to make the deal.
Right.
But I want to clear that, you know, and Ben's here, and, you know, everyone also understands. That's what Sean wanted to get out, because I was confused, too. You're dictated, you can only do what you were told from the state, and then the extra is where you're trying to deal with the local situation.
Right.
Should we advise our employees to get on the list?
I think so.
To get on the state's list?
Because we didn't realize that.
Yes. I think that's the best plan at this moment, is go ahead and get registered. I am told, although I don't have any special administrative rights within Everbridge, so I can't confirm this, but I am told that the algorithm that is built into Everbridge is that if your birth date occurs on such and such a time, then you'll be placed in there. If you are a continuity of government, I don't even know if they ask you your profession. So I don't know that answer to that, because I haven't, I'm not allowed to get into it yet. So I will try to ascertain those questions. My suggestion is that we take our marching orders through what's called the GIADA, which is the Joint Interagency Task Force. Now, we can debate whether it's joint, because public health doesn't have a chair at the table, but pharmacy does, and others. But we are required to follow their directives.
Right. Okay.
And unfortunately, no one on the GIADA, or at the DHHR, has ever worked at a local Health Department. So that last six feet sometimes is getting difficulty in translation. So my thought is that if people have concerns, and they want to expend some effort in making their voices known, I would direct that to the DHHR. And then, you know, if it's constructive criticism, and it's put in a direction, I think as soon as the government understands that 1B, 1C, continuity of government, all of those things, that these people are important to making the system run, is maybe we can begin to put out some effort towards getting those people vaccinated.
And I want to be perfectly clear, I'm not trying to pit government employees versus the general public. The general public should be, by age and by conditions, if they have pre-existing conditions, should be the way it flows. And I'm going to follow that model. Even when my number comes up here, I'm still going to, when my age comes up. So, and so this isn't, you know, trying to pit one group against the other. It's just that government has created this false plan that people are expecting to be executed, and it's not going to be so, they should just tell us. They should say, okay, no, we're just going to follow age, and that'd be simplest. Age, pre-existing condition, move forward.
And just a clarification again, so I'm still confused. Please tell us, do they call the new super-site number, or the state number? Once we get that, then we can get that out. So that's what I'm asking you. Which number or system do they do?
I am told, as of yesterday afternoon, for us, the collective us, the joint planning committee.
Right.
To use our existing numbers and rosters. My concern is that if we put an extra 100,000 on our local roster, it may have difficulty getting into the Everbridge. I could be wrong on this, and if I am, I'll apologize, but I believe that the default system is going to be Everbridge. I would get registered in that.
Okay.
If you're concerned, then register with the local system as well. But when you show up, tell somebody, I'm already on another system, that helps us sort of be able to look. Because we can't run a report, I can't tell you, you know, download this one, and download this one, and look for Lee Smith's name.
Yes.
So folks that have already gotten on a list, and their name hasn't been called yet, they should go in on Everbridge and register as well? Is that what you just said?
Well, depends on the list. If they've been in Everbridge, or they're in W's, the system we just created, which is wmedicine.org/vaccine, if they're on that list, they shouldn't do anything.
They'll enter it in.
They'll be merged. The issue is, is these other lists that we created at the county level, that we've given to the Health Department, that are sitting at the Health Department, because they don't have direction to do anything with them.
So those employees should be?
Those employees then should prob, every employee should go, every employee, every citizen should probably go and register herself in the Everbridge system.
Okay. And how do they, do you type in Everbridge, or what do you type in?
Well, the county association sent out the link, so we can make that public. It is public, it's out there, but if you-
That's the VAMs system?
No, no, VAMs is different.
Okay. Well, I don't remember seeing the link for Everbridge.
Jennifer, it's not called Everbridge.
It's not called Everbridge, okay.
Or West Virginia DHHR, and type Everbridge, it'll bring you to it.
Okay.
Yes, and I believe-
I just want to get an email out after we get done here today, to make sure that everybody, that I had collected information for, is aware. That's all, I just-
Correct. The County Commission Association, Jennifer, had sent an email out as soon as the system went live. So if you pull that up, and just send that out, then we should be good.
Yeah, West Virginia, first state to launch Everbridge system.
That's the vaccinate.wv.gov.
Will launch a new service on vaccinate.westvirginia.gov, there it is. Okay. It's called actually covid, dhr.wv.gov/covid-19-pages-vaccine.
It's vaccinate.wv.gov.
Yes.
This stuff is just going real time, and again, Dr. Smith-
And that's why we're trying to help you.
I want you to carry the message to your, to the people in Charleston above you, but we certainly don't have a gripe with you. You know, you're the one that's, we're actually able to get to answer our questions.
And we want to get it clear, you know, we're number one in the country, so I can't be mad, you know, and I said it, I'm thrilled with the governor and this program, and National Guard. There are some glitches that we are trying to clarify, because, and I want it real clear, and I hope, Ben, you can get this out, just because you sign up today does not mean next week you're going to have an appointment, especially when there's no vaccines. That's what I'm trying to explain, and they said, well, you shouldn't have made that setup. Well, you got to get on the system to follow the process, and that's what we're trying to explain. And everyone's worried.
We have a couple of plans in the wings, but I need to feel comfortable that, once we unveil this, that we're not going to change it again in 15 minutes.
Right.
We've been in touch with the postmaster in Clarksburg, we're going to get out of mass mailing for those people that are not part of the Internet or social media community. We have a gentleman that gave us some free advertising for women, infants, and children on billboards, and he too is going to donate that time. So I just don't want to say, call this number, and then 10 minutes later, I have to, you know, strike that out and put another number up there. So we're waiting as patiently as we know how to get the correct thing. And it looks like in two weeks, we need two weeks' time for Everbridge to get settled, and for the state to start releasing vaccine for people other than the savour elderly.
And your PIO officer is great, Mary Wade. If she, if somehow maybe a PSA, which, you know, tells people, please answer your phone, you might be annoyed for a couple of calls, but the one that you need to get might save your life.
Right.
So if she can maybe come up with some clever campaign to push the information out, that would also be great.
Sure. Absolutely. Community immunity.
I did have a couple of questions. So when you were talking about getting the extra, the extra out of the vials, I understand that's a certain type of syringes that were being used, and those are in short supply.
Correct.
So we had the ability to get more out of the vials, but they're running out of the syringes.
So the way that it occurs is that when a shipment comes in, and I'll use West Virginia University, because that's the hub for this area, is that it goes to the National Guard, who is stationed in a set of rooms in the Health Sciences Center. WVU gets the call and says, you have X number of doses. They run down the hall, they put it in a cooler, and they run it over to their minus-80 freezer, and they're done with their part. And then it goes to this county, and that county, and the rest of them. So when we show up on our appointed time, okay, Monmouth County Health Department, you're going to get 620 doses, and we're going to give you the gloves, the alcohol wipe, and it comes in a little baggie. They count these out, and sometimes the syringes are the ones that we like, meaning that they're a little more accurate, and sometimes they're not. And we have tried to go through our own ordering systems to get a supply of those, so that we can get more than five doses out of a vial. But as you mentioned, everybody's wanting that, and they're back ordered. And so as soon as those become available, we'll get that. I did hear this morning that our own freezers, that we had ordered the minus-80, got shipped yesterday, and the FedEx freight says that they're in Lexington, and so I don't know when they'll be arriving, but hopefully, you know, all this is in preparation for us to become a little bit more independent and masters of our own destiny here.
On the, when you talked about the update to the people on the Pfizer, you said you can, they can go as far as 42 days after the 21 days?
That is correct.
Or four days before.
Including Moderna. So it's not Pfizer-specific.
Okay. That was my question, is what's for Moderna? So Moderna's 28 days, so it can go 42 days after the-
That is correct as well. And the advisory committee for the CDC is working today, and should have an announcement. That came out last week, and if you look at the CDC site, and just say, you know, second dose date, it'll lead you right to that information.
One other question, as far as talking about the vaccination and stuff, do you guys have any more questions on that?
Well, just that I would ask, when I announced, or published on Facebook about the great, what we're doing great, a number of people, I have about four or five friends in Israel, who wrote to me and said, they're ahead of us. And they said, it was first recommended 42 days. They wrote back and said, you might want to see if it'd be 21 days, because they were guaranteeing 21, but the 21 to 42, and Israel's saying, they were more concerned that they weren't sure. So it's just something-
Is that a supply and demand question, then?
No, no, no. It was that after 21, they were afraid to give it out after the 21 days, because they didn't think the effectiveness from 21 to 42. In Israel, they were saying, it wasn't as effective as up to 21 days after the dated time. I said, that's just something that they're, because they're so far ahead of us, that that was just something if you could pass on to your superiors, if we could get it out so that it's less than the 21 days after the time you're supposed to get your second shot, we'd be appreciative.
So just for clarification, the CDC is not the one that sets the vaccination guidelines. That's the ACIP.
Okay.
And they're meeting today, and whatever they say for-
Maybe that will come out.
-United States will be what we follow. But I have heard different things. I mean, you know, every day, there's a new story that comes out, and some people are saying, you know, this, or that, or the other thing. So I will follow the guidelines that we do.
Okay. One other question that I'm getting, and I'm not sure how to answer it. I have people saying, well, I'm not 65, I'm 50. Should I still register now, or should I wait till my age comes? And what, how should I answer that question?
I think, at least what I'm told by Everbridge, is that the prioritization will occur internally through their, that own algorithm. So if you sign up, and your birthday is 1970.
Right.
It's going to figure out what group you go with.
Okay.
So I would suggest that when people want to sign up, or they feel like that they do, I think that's fine. Personally, I'd like to see a huge list, because it gives instruction to the state, who then can push it up to the feds. Look, we've got a list that goes on for days that we want to get these people vaccinated.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to point out that none of you caught this in the press conference the other day, but I had a monumental goof, where I was talking about, if we were running full capacity to our vaccination center, we could put through 56,000 a week, and that we can vaccinate everybody in the state in 32 days. No, that's 32 weeks, which still, think of that.
Oh, it's crooked.
We, as a state, are only getting 24,000 a week. We need 56,000 a week to run that facility full bore, to vaccinate everybody in the state, and it would take 32 weeks to get their first dose. So this is a, I mean, this is a huge-
It's a big deal.
Until we get a huge influx into the supply, we're looking pretty far out into the future.
Right. So right now, our vaccination dates, and I gave you that schedule, what it looks like it, that's still in scratch draft form, is that we will be doing vaccinations on Fridays and Mondays, because that's just how far it stretches. We will be giving second doses, or boosters, as people are called, probably on Thursdays, and then we'll move that to Tuesdays. And eventually, we'll fill in Wednesdays, and we'll be doing it five days a week. And then Albert Wright says, we're going to do it six days a week.
Right.
And then when we get second doses, and then we'll just, you know, put all that together. So it may even be 8,000 a day.
Yeah.
Right.
If we get this thing, you know, completely-
Well, the 8,000 is where the 56 comes from, and I was even adding a different day, an additional day, and saying seven days a week, which, again, I'm just throwing out numbers, but that would be to, if you, to run at full capacity for seven days a week, for 32 weeks, to get everybody in the state vaccinated.
Right. So when people are talking about October, or late summer, and that's-
So when we're talking about getting 200 extra a week.
Yeah.
I mean, I-
I feel you.
Um, will this be, I'm sorry, Jeff?
No, no, no. I was just agreeing.
When you're talking about the Johnson &amp; Johnson, now is that the, if, when that one comes on live, that's the one shot?
Correct.
I've heard stories of people waiting for that. Will that also, doesn't, isn't that the live, the live call server?
Yeah, it's not a messenger RNA. And I have not seen the paperwork, I can only read so much in a day, so I don't know very much about that.
I don't know how you can keep up with my email, just my emails in a day. And that, of course, you'll get this all fine-tuned and running, and then they'll have a third, and that will kind of just-
Right. And so you'll get a blue card for Moderna, and Mondays are Moderna- And so, you'll get a blue card for Moderna and Mondays are Moderna days and Fridays are Pfizer days and we'll try and figure it out as we go along. So, looking at your card is going to be the important part and what color were you?
Okay.
So, they're about a month out for asking for emergency approval, is that right?
That is, that is my understanding.
Do we have any idea, has anyone heard their production, are they already producing, mass producing it and ready to roll it out once they get approval or are they still in the?
It depends on who you read, you know, some of the news outlets have said that they're ready to push out, you know, a couple million doses, you know, and I don't know where that pipeline is and how you get to it.
At some, at some point Warp Speed, they were producing before they even finalized it, so hopefully they're, they're the same. Okay, I don't, you have any other questions?
Just a couple and you answered it. Different groups are concerned and they're calling us and now I'll use one and I had mentioned to you and now I now know how to answer it, which I'm going to tell them to go to thevaccine.com to register. Those individuals like who are handicapped, special needs, who can't, don't know what to do, so people are asking for them what to do and would I be amiss if I tell them to have those people, like say it's through stepping stones, fill out the app like for each one of those individuals through the vaccinate.gov or whatever? That, so that way, now we don't know when they will be.
Correct.
But we at least get them in and that, I think a lot of the question is, you know, when did he do it and how they do it? And I want it real clear, because we're so ahead of everyone else, we're getting all the calls and concerns and I can't say enough about your workers, the people at the Health Department, Mon Health and WVU. I mean, it's exceptional. In fact, like I said, my brother's calling me from Philly saying, can you bring them down here because they, I don't know if you heard what happened there, they had a young group that went out and did it and basically it's been a disaster because they didn't have the background that you all have. And so, I just want to say thank you and we're trying, we just want to get out whatever message you need us to get out and just contact us and we will.
Commissioner Bloom, let me just ask that when we have special needs groups like that.
Okay.
My concern is that if they're individually listed in Everbridge, they may not be considered as a group.
Okay.
And so, if the leadership of those wants to give us that group, we can try.
That's perfect. I'd rather do that.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
Who do they give it to? Okay.
Okay, great. That's what we wanted to know and I think, because I got a whole list right here, you know, and that's because I said I'm going to see you, but I'm going to have them contact you.
Yeah, no, that's fine, because I think the more we can concentrate that, whether it's, at some point in time, we do have the ability to go visit a site and do 10 or 12 or 15 or 20, whatever it is, and get that part done.
That's a great idea. That's where that 20 extra.
Although logistics of moving these people around is, is very difficult and we're still in winter.
No, I'm ecstatic. I mean, I really am. I can't say enough and you know, I know Sean was there representing us and I know we were very pumped that we're able to do this as a county and I think it's real important and it says a lot on your behalf and the leadership of the other, you know, two CEOs. And we, I just want to say thank you and I'm glad you came in because you're answering the questions that we're getting. People are afraid to call you, but they're not afraid to call us at.
Hard to get that out.
11 o'clock at night.
Quick clarification of something I asked you earlier about folks that already had their names on a list with the Health Department or the hospital or whoever and if it's a group list like an employee section of the courthouse, they don't need to do anything, that list will be merged, but you had mentioned that other individuals need to register on the Everbridge. Does that include individuals that have already called in and gotten on lists that aren't necessarily part of a group?
Now, if they were already on a list, then I don't, I don't know that they need to per se. That I say, knowing that I run the risk, it's, there's a lot of human touches here and invariably somebody's going to fall through the cracks and someone's going to say, well, had I only signed up for that 13th list, I would have, I would have made it. I don't know how to answer that. I don't want to cause such a congestion that it continues to crash the system.
The Everbridge site says if you're on a waitlist, don't.
Right.
Don't register with us, it'll be merged when you walk in, that input or get the input to them.
Okay, but just to be clear, because we've given county lists to the Health Department and we just said earlier, wouldn't you advise our employees to just go ahead and register in Everbridge and I believe the answer was yes.
Well, maybe I didn't understand that. If they're already registered with us.
Well, they're on a spreadsheet which was given to you.
Okay, no, that's fine, because we're trying to figure out what it is that we need to put into Everbridge. Are we going to have to put it in ourselves? Is it going to be an Excel spreadsheet that we can just export? Unknown at this time, but according to what Commissioner says, that's correct. They don't want to cram the system, so I may be misspoke or misunderstood the question. If you're on a list, you probably don't need to. If you haven't heard, let's say for example, that we're still doing the 65 and over and you hear that we're going to be transitioning to 1B or whatever it is and you say, well, I'm in the 65 group, how come I haven't gotten a call? If you feel like that you've fallen through the cracks, then contact one of us, either WVU, Mon Health, or Montague County Health Department and we'll try to identify where, you know, things were, because it is an imperfect system.
Yeah, because here's a perfect example. We have an employee and I'm going to, I'm going to keep the names private, but we had an employee that was on one of our lists that was sitting with you and a very elderly employee, I think over mid 80s, maybe even 90. As soon as we announced, as soon as she heard about the WVU, our collaborative effort, she went to the site, put, got registered, got called the next day and had her shot on Monday. So, she had been languishing on a list that was, because of her age, she should have been, you know, she got called and she went to the other system and put her name in and she got called. So, that, the system works the way it's supposed to because there was other people that, and God bless Jamie Moore that works for you, he gets texts from me all the time and people fall through the cracks.
Right.
For some reason, people know that I'm, I have a contact with the Health Department, so I'm texting him all hours of the night. This, this couple over here says they've, it's the same old story where they say they've called the Health Department, no one returned their calls. When you, when you research it, you find out, yeah, we called them back here, we called them back here, they won't pick up the phone. And I don't know whether your call tree doesn't show a local number or whatever, I don't know, but 80-year-old couple, you know, both were 80 years old, I gave the Jamie, they got scheduled within a day. But he put them in the system and the system queued them and they went. Another 91-year-old couple, gentleman, you know, the system works.
Those calls are not going to cease for you all and we're happy to work these channels to try and get people in because there will invariably be people that are left out. I don't want to open the floodgates on you or any of the commissioners or anybody that works in any of these offices, but if you have those problems, you let us know, we'll try our best to get that worked out.
Okay.
Good. No, I really appreciate you, you answered a lot of our questions.
Good. And if you have any more, you know how to get hold of me.
Thank you for coming downtown to conduct your Mon County Health Department meeting. Mark Music, you have a question?
Can I ask something else? Some questions I get.
Yeah.
If you're not within that age group or you're 60 or just a little older, you're going through type 2 or 3 ID or you had a transplant surgery, if you're not at that age. Kind of no questions for the age called in, if they're registered or have registered.
Okay. Yeah.
Right.
No, but at least it's on, but I'm glad we got the call for it so now.
So, we've had several people that have advanced cancer or looked at surgery or between chemo and such and I've talked to enough of the surgeons and the Hemon people that there's no contraindication to them getting the vaccine. And we, when we were able to schedule them on our own, we pushed these people into the system. Right now, I don't have any instruction from Charleston on how they would like to see the people who, let's just talk about age, let's talk about medical conditions. That have issues, whether, you know, it's heart or kidney or whatever, whatever medical condition or combination of conditions. We do not have any direction from Charleston right now as to what category they go into. So, I would ask for patience and we continue to ask these questions and they say, well, we're sending it up the line and we haven't had a response. So, it's not that you're a voice in the wilderness, we do want to know how to deal with this. And it's like Commissioner Bloom said, you know, this is a great example of what can be done. We hope that this is a model that is exported of counties, because you can see how collecting the horsepower can get things done. The sooner that we get additional doses, the sooner we will be able to, be able to control how that gets on. I ask for your opinion. Yes, sir.
Second question would be, if someone was on their list and for some reason they were able to get a shot at another area, maybe someone they do the.
Sure, sure.
And they would call because of certain conditions and they got it.
Right.
Should they, if they get called, the court party informed that I've received the first one, so they would let them know, the next one will come back in and get the second one?
Go ahead, let me.
Would they be able to get the second one with, say the Health Department, if they've gotten it from a pharmacist, say in another county?
From the same place.
Would they?
That's a great question.
Would they be able to get the second one?
We're working on a solution to that, because that has come up in a variety of situations. I had to go take care of my elderly parent out of town and I took them when I was in Roanoke and then they gave me my shot and now I don't want to travel back to Roanoke to get my second shot, who do I get it from? We're hearing that they got their first shot through the pharmacy and now they don't have the stock or staff or inclination to get it. We're working on a solution to that because that is a problem and another area where people fall through the hole. I do not have additional vaccine that I can, can give to those, but it's my hope that at some point in time, when we get adequate numbers, we'll have a little stock that we can start to deal with some of those special cases as they move through. You need to show up Monday and tell them blah, blah, blah and we'll get you squared away.
So, basically, they've got it at the one place, they should hold on and.
They should try and get it and again, they've got additional time.
To get the second one there.
Right, right. And if they can't, then they need to let one of us know and we'll be happy to try and walk them through a solution.
Okay.
All right, sure. Pleasure. Come on the runway.
If we had live call, then maybe, the line would be going off right now.
We have call.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Smith. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all for your work and your support.
As if you have nothing else to do besides run a county health program.
Okay, well, we'll continue with the agenda. We have Colleen Kuhn Grants. Do we have any? None? Okay. Next item on the agenda is correspondence.
Let me, let's see, I've got one, I've got one item from Bow Park, second quarter levy report, October 1st through December 31st, that will be on file here. And that's the only thing I have, sir.
Okay, you had it out in the file, oh, never mind. Anybody else, do you have anything to, no?
Nope.
Okay, all right. All right, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? None? New business. Consideration of appointments to the Montague County Deputy Civil Service Board and the Decker's Creek Public Service District.
Previously, an attorney, Jeff Compton, served on the Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service Board. He has passed away, so we have somebody interested, Nick DiMedici, who used to be a deputy for the County Sheriff's Department, is interested in serving. And then for Decker's Creek, Russell Bonasso, who lives in Brookhaven, he would like to serve on the Decker's Creek Public Service District.
Move Nick DiMedici for the.
Seconded.
Okay, so in terms of appointing Nick DiMedici to the Montague County Sheriff's Association, we have a first and a second.
Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Deputy Sheriff's Civil Service.
Service Board.
Got you. We have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously.
Okay, Russell Bonasso.
I move for Russell Bonasso to be appointed.
Seconded.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item is to consider for discussion, approval of county commission assigned assignments, assigned appointments to various boards and authorities.
Okay, I'm going to run through these real quick. See Commissioner Arnett, well, I'll tell you what, Commissioner Arnett, Commissioner Bloom and Commissioner Secora will all serve on the MMPO. Commissioner Arnett, Mon River Trails Conservancy, Montague County Planning Commission, Camp Muffley Advisory Board and the Met Theater Board. Commissioner Bloom, Chestnut Ridge Park Advisory Board, Visit Mountain Air Country, Greater Morgantown CBB, Pedestrian Safety Committee, Region 6 Planning and Development Council. That is on behalf of the commission. Mon County Teen Court, Mon County Services Center, Mon County, or Morgantown Area Services Project and the Pantry Plus More. Some of those are commission appointments, some of those he will serve on as an individual, not necessarily a representative of the commission. Commissioner Secora, Mon County Development Authority, Mon, or Morgantown Area Partnership, the Red Team for the runway extension at the airport, Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board, Mylan Park Foundation, and he will represent the commission during meetings of the Mon County Board of Health and Mon County Board of Education. He will also serve on behalf of the commission for the Mon County Extension Service Advisory Board and the Juma Committee, which is part of Mylan Park for the Aquatic Center. You all have agreed that on a rotating basis, you will each take turns on the Mon County Volunteer Firemen's Association and then, that's it actually for the commission.
Okay, well, there's the administrator. You, you perform on the behalf of the commission, those three, you might as well go ahead and mention those.
Okay, so the Local Emergency Planning Committee, MECA 911 Policy Board and the Mon County Community Corrections Board, which is for the data report, sir.
Do I have a motion to approve the?
So, move.
Seconded.
Okay, first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion passed unanimously.
Typically, we don't normally address these every year like this, but I think that's probably what we'll start doing.
Okay.
So, that we can just renew, renew those every year.
Exactly.
Keep them straight.
Thank you. To consider for approval, requisition number 43 for the University Town Center Series 2017 Administrative Expense Fund.
Requisition is for $756.25 and those funds will be paid to Munichap for their services.
Still move.
Seconded.
We have a first and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Okay, do we have any other new business items?
No.
Okay. Reports from elected officials and/or department supervisors. Have anybody would like to report? Mr. Statler, Delegate Statler.
Well, I didn't command to address you and that's what we always start by when we address the legislature. I didn't intend to speak, but I want to say thank you for the community and everything. You know, it was very educational to listen to Dr. Smith this morning and it's certainly not the thing is getting out completely to the people out there. I do get calls, same as everybody else gets them, wanting to know how the system is working. I do know a little bit more now about what the system's going to set up, so I certainly appreciate that. I can't imagine what it's like for him and the calls he's getting a day because I try not just to pass those off of kin. I did mention to him there that I got a call from Missouri yesterday from a mother that has a son in the Kennedy Center and supposedly there was an outbreak out there and they used a pretty large number and you have to tell her, you know, they're not going to give me any information. I can call the Kennedy Center all day and they're constantly telling you. So, I appreciate the information that you can get. The reason that I would want to speak to you today is a couple fold. The first thing I would like to say is, I appreciate the work that you're doing on Catherine Nob to get that tower up. Please keep the fire lit under that project and I know you are and I know Mr. Smith back there is working hard. It is invaluable. You never know how much you depend upon something until you no longer have it. And I get a lot of calls from that end of the county now that their, their internet systems and that is not working at well all. A lot of them is working from home and then you also have now with the school systems in a way that is, it's really being quite burdensome to that. in a way that is, it's really being quite burdensome to that area, so please. I mean, even if you need to call me and I got some time or equipment, I can go up and work on it, I'm willing to go up. I will not go up in the air. I will not go in the air. I'll handle equipment on the ground, but I don't do air. With saying that, the last thing at Ducom, as an elected delegate from this county, is I want to keep the channel of communications open with you gentlemen and so when we can, I'd like to sit down. I have some information, just as everybody else, bills have not been introduced in Charleston yet, but we all know there's bills being drafted down there. We know some members will share those bills with other members to look at it, some I don't know and I'm sure that there'll be some that I, like everybody else, will just kind of scratch my head and say, do we need that at this time? But saying that, I need to find out, you know, where you're at with the county, what is the most important thing that's out there? And I can carry that message down to the legislature and to the House, or both sides really, I talk quite often with the senators. So we need to keep that channel open. I may not be able to get everything accomplished you want accomplished, but sometimes it's not what you accomplish getting a bill passed, but what you stop, sometimes just as important as what you move forward. So with that, that's the only thing I wanted to say to you today. Thank you for keeping track of all this going on with the COVID. I did mention it to a constituent yesterday that they had a concern. I was able to work through the governor's office and, and General Hoyer and some others and all they wanted was to be put on the list. Sometimes it's as simple as that, get put somewhere on the schedule so that our group is at least being looked at. And they thanked me for it and I did tell them, you know, don't thank me for it, it's a little bit like a pothole in the road. Never say that you was able to get somebody to repair that pothole, because I can tell you, there's 10 more out there that need repairing. So be careful about what you take credit for. Thank you.
Thank you, James. No one else want to speak? Okay, reports from county commissioners. Jeff?
Just one, just to offer our condolences on the untimely passing of Jeff Giosi and just to comment on the overwhelming support the community has, has given to his widow and his, and his, and his two young children. And it's kind of heartwarming to know that people out there care and they're really coming forth and stepping up for this great family. I've known them for years and just, just wanted to say thank you to the community for that and just to offer our condolences to that family.
Tom?
Yeah, I would agree. It was a shocker and, and those of us who are older than, than, I think it wakes you up a little bit and, and shows what your priorities really are. Second, I do want to give this to you, I met with a group of people and I didn't even know this existed. It is the Northern Appalachian Coal Mining Heritage Association and they actually have a museum, which if you go along 79 where the coal miner standing, the putt putt course, it's, there's actually a museum there and also one in Fairmont. They just came to see what they could do to get more information about getting it out, talk with CVB and they didn't want any money. They just were, you know, I just thought it was a really neat idea that we would promote, help promote it, you know, did not know that existed. And finally, the third thing is I, I want to thank Lee for coming in and what I recommend to our community is patience. Because we are the leader, we are getting the first phone calls and we do not have all the answers. We're trying to get the answers and trying to get, you know, as much information out there publicly and I just would appreciate people to understand that we are working and we're trying to get this. People do not understand, just because you call in, there may have been 40,000 people called in before you. So please understand, we do not have any special inroads. We, we try and get answers to your questions and that's what I hope you would understand.
Thank you, Tom. I like to usually brief my schedule for the week, so since last Wednesday, this whole super, super vaccination center started with just a call from Albert right to me on last Wednesday, said, hey Sean, can I show you something? So I asked Tom and Jeff if they wanted to go with me and we went up and we looked at the center and so I did that last, last Wednesday afternoon. Thursday, we had another meeting and by the time we left then, we had an agreement in principle. So all these organizations coming together that quickly to pull this whole thing together and it wasn't easy. We had a pretty complicated MOU that we were working on late into the night on Sunday, first thing on Monday, you know, to get to the point where we are ready to proceed with the press conference. So I appreciate everybody's help with that. Last Thursday, we had a MMPO meeting and then on Friday I had a Juma ATC Operations Discussion, that's the Aquatic and Track Center. We had staff reports and they had a broadband initiative meeting in the afternoon. Obviously, Monday, we had our Vaccination Clinic Press Conference. Yesterday, I got on another call, the Vaccination Center Logistics Discussion and that was to come up with that schedule that, the draft schedule that Lee shared with us, that it's not public yet because they're still working on it, but I sat and listened to an hour and a half of how they were dealing with all these problems between systems and the people in our county should rest assured that the best and the brightest are, are working to try to smooth out and make it as easy as possible for everybody. Today's a regular day. Tomorrow, I have a Health Department Board of Health meeting. Friday, we have, I have another Juma ATC Operations Meeting, Staff Reports and Broadband Initiative. I do want to thank Dr. Smith for having his Mon County Health Department Meeting South here today. I think it was informative. It was good for people to be able to ask questions and try to get, it puts a flavor on the complexity of this whole pandemic and what our Health Department's been dealing I do also want to thank Mountain Line that Dr. Smith had brought up. You know, this is why the people voted favorably in favor of that levy, that excess levy, because they provide support like this and they, they pivot on a dime depending on whether it's events or, or changes that, that need to be addressed. So I really do appreciate Dave Bruffey and his staff for, for being flexible. Joe, I really appreciate communication. You'll notice last week when we had our media advisory for the press conference, that I sent out a message to all the delegates and all the senators, there was like 13 people on that list and they were probably wondering, why is the commission sending this out? But it was just in trying to increase communication so that you guys are aware and try to make sure that we keep those open communication channels to everybody that represents us in Charleston. And that's the last thing I'd like to say is, well, next to the last thing I'd like to say is, I hear all the time, we have no power to do anything, but what you saw on Monday, what you saw from concept to working together and to putting, you know, having a press, announcing it and then operation, you know, we have the power of communication, just like today, we have the power of communication to have the Health Department here to communicate and provide information. So that, that's a pretty awesome power and with that, we can accomplish some, some great things. I do send my condolences to Sarah Giosi and her family. That was very powerful that she took to Facebook Live on Sunday to comfort people or friends that, you know, were upset about her husband's passing and is very, you know, she's, it was incredible. She's a, she's a very strong woman of faith and I wish her and her family, my prayers are, my prayers, my family's prayers are with her and, you know, I was just very impressed by, by the whole outpouring from the public for, for that family. I do want to wish my daughter's birthday. This is that time of the year where I have two daughters' birthdays within five days of each other. Becca turned 20 on Monday, happy birthday Becca, and Gwen turns 15 on Saturday, happy birthday Gwen. That's all I have.
Move to, move to adjourn?
Second. We're adjourned.
Happy birthday.